We all ready? Okay, I have that it's 5:32 so we're going to call the meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all board members are present with the exception of Dr. Prater. So please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll try this. Happy New Year to everyone and I know the beginning of the school year is off to, or the beginning of the new year is off to a challenge with the school system. But again, I want to thank all of our employees and our parents and our students for their understanding during these really pretty difficult and unprecedented times here in the Ozarks. And because of, because of the weather, we have postponed the special recognition of section two, which involves all of students. And so we will postpone that, I think, until our regular meeting. Is that right? Is that what's been scheduled? So with that said, we're going to go into really what's going to be the majority of our meeting tonight, and that's around strategic discussion in three different areas. And to start us off, we do have Dana Carroll and Todd and Betty Parnell who are here representing the work that's been done really by our entire community on the Every Child Promise. So with that said, would you like to come forward? Just at the podium is fine. Yep.
Maybe.
To the side.
Yeah, you can just, I think, just make sure, can we get the mic? Can we get the mic near you? Maybe stand on the other side Dana.
You brought a box. Something good.
Yeah.
Thank you. She's small but mighty, that's for sure.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me come and speak to you today. I felt like it was important to get us all on the same page because although many of you have had some involvement, some of you much involvement in this, the Every Child Promise, I felt like it was just good for everybody to hear all the same things. And so I will start by recognizing the news leader and the work that they did with the Every Child Initiative. And certainly those hard-hitting stories that they did two years ago were tough to read sometimes, but certainly provocative. And out of those stories came the Every Child Promise. And the promise, which I think I have included in your packet, is that we will, that we, our community promises to empower families so that every child aged birth to six has the opportunity to enter school ready to learn. And it's a promise, and a promise is your word, it's a bond, and it's something we don't take lightly. We looked at the fact that this is not the job necessarily of the community, but the job of parents. But certainly, we want to support parents and empower them, provide the tools in their role, in their job, to ensure that their children are ready to learn. And we looked at birth to six because we know that from all the research and our experience that those first six years, we get the best bang for our buck. We're going to invest heavy in the, in the front end and hope for, and know that great results come out of that. And then ready to learn, and certainly you know what ready to learn looks like, and you know that children who are not ready to learn pose lots of challenges in this, in the school classroom. And so we want them to be ready to learn. And what we know is, is that if we can prepare them, then we have all the confidence in the world and at our school, certainly a top-notch, top in the, okay, I'm going to say it's, top in the state, top in the, you know, it's, it's, they can take those, those children and prepare them for, for a successful life, and certainly we'll have them loving learning throughout life. And I was on a conference call this afternoon and they said, you know, lifelong learning, loving to learn is critical to all of us. You get a new iPhone, guess what, you've got to relearn a million things. And so certainly, it's something that we have to be willing to do, and those of us who can are going to be more successful than those of us who just refuse. And so certainly, that was our, that was the idea. And so we went with a committee structure, and we had five committees, and I think you're, you, in your package, you see that there's some, some great folk that were involved in the leadership of that committee. And not only the leadership, but then we had 157 community individuals, members, that said, you know, we're on and we want to be a part of this. And for two months, we said September and October, give us two months to help frame the recommendations that we will take then to develop our strategic plan. And those people met for 20, I think it was 27 meetings, 58 or so hours that they dedicated to this initiative, and they said, here are the recommendations that we have, here's our goal, here are our metrics, here are the things that we want to watch over the next 10 years. It's a long-term plan, it's not something that we're going to, to do overnight or even in a year. We're guessing it's going to take us at least 10 years, maybe longer, but certainly 10 years to, to get children better prepared for school. And we looked at five different areas. So we said early childcare, early childhood education, we looked at safety and security, so that the child abuse and neglect prevention piece, food and nutrition, and certainly you all have embraced that with breakfast in the classroom and know how important that is, that kids be fed to be able to learn. And then finally, health. And we asked those individuals to bring those recommendations, and we were able to come up with several strategies, several metrics that we're going to watch over the next 10 years. And then also, there were some specific ones that I know that, that are near and dear to your heart, and I, and I included those in your packet. And I just thought I would let you know that we are asking for you to, just to know what we, we're going to do over the next 10 years, but also, we're coming to ask for, for you to consider that early childhood education is a priority for the district as well as for our community. And, you know, we really are looking for a community-wide and a, certainly a united front to, to face what's good for kids and to, to know that without all of us, without certainly, without all of our engagement, without all of our bond, without all of us promising to do what's best for kids, you know, I can, I can stand up here and tell you all the things that I know need to be good, and I can go out there and I can gather a group of people, but if we're not as a community united on this, then certainly it's going to fall short until it's, until it is a community-wide plan, a community-wide promise. So that's the first thing, is to ask you to consider early childhood education in preschool specifically, that you would make that a strategic priority for the district. The next thing that we would ask is that certainly when, as you, you look to hire the new superintendent, that you will ensure that that individual has early childhood as not only one of the things that they say that they're supportive of, but that they can, they can prove it with the past perhaps. Certainly Dr. Ritter has been a huge supporter and has moved our, this initiative forward. And, and so looking to the future and our superintendent, that you will ensure that that's one of the things that they are, they're passionate about as well. Now, I would also ask that if you have any questions for us, that we would be delighted to try to answer those, and I'm going to ask that my friends in the back help me if there's things that I can't, can't answer.
Are there any questions, Mrs. Carroll? I'm sure there are. Go ahead Jerry.
I'll start.
Yeah, start.
Well, one, I, first of all, I want to thank Dana and Todd and Betty for the job you guys have done on this thing, putting it together. It's been, I, I know just from the involvement that I had, it's herding cats, big time.
They're friendly cats mostly.
Everybody's got an opinion, everybody's got a thought. And so I think bringing it all together has really been great, the way you guys have done that with, with the community, because it is a community effort. It's not just the district, it's not just that. And so I don't know that I've got any questions other than a couple of comments, just from the standpoint, you made a comment about, or one of your recommendation was to make it a strategic issue for the district. And I do think that's something we need, because it's not, I hate saying that publicly. Early childhood has not been a strategic focus of this district, and I think it's time that we did and made it a strategic issue, a fundamental issue of what we, if we believe the results that we get from early childhood, which are out there. And so, you know, I, I certainly hope as we move forward, particularly right now with the budgeting process, that we start looking at how do we ramp up specifically, which I think is our parents' teachers', which is our responsibility. You know, that is a responsibility and obligation of us, and I think that we need to be looking at that as we do the budget process, and getting parents' teachers back on the table at a level that's accessible to parents, all parents, to have access to it. And so, you know, I know that's a financial obligation we're going to have to address because we all got lots of things coming to the table, but I think if we believe the 17, 7 to 17% return on investment, we spend a lot of money after the fact doing remediation when we could take care of it upfront.
Right, you're paying for it.
We're paying for it.
Right.
Yeah, the old Fram filter thing.
Mm-hmm.
And I think one of the things historically we've done that, and I've heard Mr. Hosmer say this several times, I mean, it's like, because the state cuts funding, we quit doing it.
Yeah.
Or the federal funds go away, we quit doing it, even though we know most definitely it works. Whether it's parents' teachers, reading, whatever it is, that we, wonder years, we know that pays off, so why don't we invest?
And I will tell you, we did a presentation several months ago, and one of the things a gentleman said to us is, if I know that it's local control, local focused, local control, I'm willing to give local dollars, because if I have to wait for it to come back from the state or back from the feds, it, I can't be assured. If I, if it's a local, local issue, it's certainly, I'm more likely to, to be engaged in that and give.
And I think that your, the local control is critical. You know, if we can get money from the state, great. That doesn't mean we shouldn't be doing a full-fledged parents' teachers'. Now, I think there's a lot of discussion we need to, need to have about preschool with respect to how we deal with preschool and, and, you know, the pre-K.
Well, and as you know.
You know, just from the standpoint of the private sector and all that, and we can help, I think, and be a part of that, but parents' teachers, I guess, is probably the one that I really think that we can step up to the plate and make it happen in this community the way it should be. And it ought to be the Springfield way, not Jefferson City way. And if that means we need to go find funding locally, so be it. If that means we need to reprioritize, so be it. But I am a strong believer that it needs to be the Springfield model and not a model that somebody 141 miles away tells us that it ought to look like. But I, one, I applaud your effort, and I, I'm kind of excited about moving the community. You said 10 years, you know, it's, it's, it's an 18-year investment.
Absolutely.
We got them through high school, so that's funds that are going to pay big dividends if we invest that dollar and wait and be patient.
And this is an economic development issue. You know, I'm, I'm the humanitarian in the group, and I always like the, you know, the warm and fuzzy piece of this, but certainly, like we said before, you're paying for it, whether it's interme, remediation or incarceration costs, healthcare costs, there are a million things that are, that we're paying for, but if we go to the front end and invest early, it's going to be a lot cheaper.
Can I preach?
My turn to preach. Some of us have been at this over a decade, and I think this is our opportunity. There's something called a tipping point, and this is the tipping point, and I think that's thanks to the news leader and what they've done, and the leadership from our community. I know budgeting is hard, I know we have to make choices, and right now, we have to do remediation and prevention.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
We have to do that. We can't let one go and, and only do the other. But we have to do that, and we have to find a way. And I'm personally committed to make sure that we can make that happen. I'm glad to see the results of your strategic plan. I think it will give direction to not just the school board, but to lots of organizations within the community. I look forward to continuing to work with the groups that are interested, including the Mayor's Commission to Children, for children, because I know a lot of background work has been done on what we do with preschool versus pre-K. I know there are a lot of things through missing and, and others, I'm sorry, Ms. Riley, that have been done to lay the groundwork. And I look forward to hearing the details of some of that research and some of that planning that's happened. I hope we can hear that very, in the very near future. Thank you.
Is this a county or a city initiative? I know what the answer is.
You know, this is a community issue. And so where we, we're looking at, at metrics that are, some of them are Springfield, some of them are county. So when we looked at child abuse and neglect, we said, we don't, can't get a Springfield number, we can get a county number. So we're going to move the, the metric for reducing child abuse and neglect at the county level.
So as you look at the surrounding districts, are you doing a comparison as far as what they offer for preschool versus what Springfield you're doing?
Certainly, certainly, looking at, you know, the impact and how that affects readiness.
I'm just curious, I, I know what it is, I just.
Yeah.
Couple of questions of, in your groups looking at this, how closely correlated with, are all these problems with poverty in our community? Do you find a high correlation there?
Absolutely. I mean, certainly that's probably the, the one that is a, is a common factor in just about every, I'm trying to think, everyone. You know, I think that it is something that, that we don't, we don't think, or kid ourselves into thinking that we can fix this. We certainly can't tackle poverty and not tackle how it, how families are impacted. And, but, you know, early childhood education, we know that people can, that can afford it, get good education, and those that don't either settle or their kids land on the kindergarten steps without any education. Safety and security, those, that's one that, there's a correlation between poverty and stress, health and nutrition. Yeah, I think certainly they are all connected.
And the reason I ask that is because in my looking at this and trying to figure out how you, how you attempt to resolve some of these issues, is that until we as a community start grappling with that issue, then we can, you know, we can work kids up to kindergarten as much as we want, but when we have a kindergarten or a first grader that moves 20 times from school to school to school to school because his parents are kicked out of their, their homes, all that preschool edu, education and all that effort that we've done, you know, is minimized because we're still having that food insecurity and, and housing insecurity and all these other things. So I would hope that as you guys go forward, that that focus remains, that, that's an elephant in the room, that we still as a community have to, need to deal with, because, because the numbers that I've seen, I asked, I asked Ms. Moore to give me some numbers on, you know, kids ready for kindergarten, and it's a direct correlation. Poor kids are not nearly as ready as, as middle-class kids to get into kindergarten. And I don't think it's because poor kids' parents are dumb, or those poor kids are dumb. It's because of all of the things that go along with poverty that we all, that we all know of. So I hope that as you go forward, and I applaud what you're doing, I just hope as you go forward, we, as a community, we continue to put a focus on the big issue that drives all of this, and that is, that is poverty in the community.
And, and I agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying. I also will tell you that there are poor kids who come to school and they're ready. And so some of it is resiliency and making sure that children who, before they get to kindergarten are resilient, and, and that is one thing that we can do so that it minimizes the impact of poverty and, and not, some of the things that we know they're going to face. So I, I agree that it's something that, it is an elephant and we need to, need to talk about it, but I also think that there are some other things that we can do, and we do, obviously, and you do as well. You know, the, the school definitely does look at children who are.
The next question I have is, when you're looking at this, you know, we, we all talk about, you know, four and five-year-olds and getting them ready for kindergarten, and yet you look at the research, and the research suggests that zero to, zero to two, that if you're not there zero to two, then all your efforts three and four are, again, minimized dramatically because you failed to, to reach the kids when, when you had that, the best chance. So what, what are you guys thinking about in terms of, of how you, how you meet that obligation?
Well, I think you might have walked right into Dr. Lee, or Mr. Lee's trap, which is, certainly PAT is one of those. It is one of the ways that, that you can serve families prenatally up through five, but certainly the, a heavy focus on, on the birth to two population. And then a lot of the strategies that we have in play, that we will present on January 21st, by the way, and we will, we'll roll out the full plan on that date, are centered around families and, and families with children birth to three. And so the preschool is just one piece of that. There are many of the strategies that involve families with young children, even younger than preschool.
And I don't know if you've looked, there was a, Missouri School Boards had a presentation from Center City, Kansas City, is that Center City? I sent you that material.
Center School District.
Center School District, has a, had a very interesting program that, that dealt with that birth to, to school age, and, and they went into the doctor's offices, pediatrician's offices, and, and, you know, got the information there where people first access that prenatal care and, and to, to understand what services were available, because, you know, that knowledge that it, it starts prenatally, but then certainly after the child is born.
Surely, it's a, it has to do with, you know, the, the style of parenting and a lot of things related to that. So not to fear, we definitely have that as a piece of this as well, so.
And my final comment question is, is, I'm guessing that the answer to this, I mean, not every, we're not, you're not saying that every child needs pre-K education.
Right, absolutely.
Needs to be in a preschool. People are perfectly able to have their kids ready for kindergarten at home, and sometimes ideal, that's the ideal place for, for a child.
And one of the things that I didn't mention is that this is, it's universal access but voluntary. And, and certainly if, there are many ways to prepare kids for kindergarten, and preschool is not always the best way, it's just one of the many ways, and it certainly is one that if a parent just doesn't have the skill or the knowledge or the time or whatever it is, and we want them to be able to have those opportunities. But yeah, certainly, no, it's definitely not a mandatory thing, we can't afford it for one thing.
Well, right, and, and, and it's not needed in a lot of situations.
True, mm-hmm.
And that kind of goes back to Jerry's point and points we've made with parents' teachers, that you do though, need somebody looking at all kids and saying, hey, you know, we may have a problem with Jimmy here with this, or, or, you know, Jennifer needs to be able to do this by six months, and we're not seeing that. And, and that's where you, you start cutting funding for parents' teachers for, for all families. You're not putting the eyes out there, and you're not, you know, alerting parents to potential problems down the road, so.
Right.
I do think there needs to be some universal access point of, you know, kind of seeing and putting some eyes on, on some kids so that we can determine whether or not.
Just make sure, support.
Services are needed, but then given the access to those services when they are needed, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to make one comment about, and I think one, Mr. Hosmer's, and we've talked about it, and the Mayor's Commission's talked about it, is we do a pretty good job of doing kindergarten screening for kids coming into kindergarten.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm wondering if we need to be talking about doing an earlier screening of some sort, available to parents at three-year-old, and say, okay, here's where your child is at three years, three-year-old, now we've got a couple of years to quote remediate and prepare that child for pre-K, 4K itself, or kindergarten. And I know we do some, three, I mean, that's what parents' teachers sort of is anyway, it's kind of a three-year screening process with checkpoints by parent educators, which we, we don't get enough visits to the house, but that, that's why we need to talk about expanding it. But I'm just wondering if, if that's something that we need to, at some point, have a discussion about, of having a more formalized opportunity for parents to have their kids screened at three-years-old, to give parents information.
Agreed.
What do I need to do to help my child be prepared?
Agreed, that that is critically important, and I'm going to say one more time, January the 21st, we all have a full release of what we, what we intend, and certainly, certainly it's one of the things that, you know, the best time to catch a delay is the earliest that, that you can, and you can make inroads much quicker, much easier, much less expensively if you catch them early. So I think you're reading my paper.
I just have one question. I know there were different groups looking at different areas. Was there a group that looked at strategic funding of this, of all these initiatives, of how a community would fund these needs or these strategic initiatives?
So the, the way that we are, are looking at it, is that we are looking at pilots, and we are going to pilot some small pockets and small, you know, smaller initiatives, and then with the idea that if we can prove that they are successful, then we can scale them up. And, and we have some, some funding opportunities, we have some funding that's, that's committed right now. We are certainly looking for more funding, but, but our, I think our job is to, to go after funding for the pilots so that we can prove that this is really, well, you know, we're the show-me state, we're the show-me city. Prove it, show me that it works before I'm willing to fund this, before the community's going to be willing to, in, in whatever way we decide. And, and we don't, we didn't talk funding specifically related to anything because we know that that's perhaps the kiss of death, you know, so we're, we're, but I think if we can convince the community through the pilots that this is, this is what's good for kids, we have commissioned a study with Dr. Michael Stout and MSU to say, what is the cost of doing nothing? On the current trajectory, where we're going right now with readiness and, and child abuse and neglect rates, and, and childhood obesity and food insecurity, where, where things are right now, where will our community be in 10 years or 20 years? What are the additional incarceration, healthcare, remediation, all those costs, what are they? And so then the budget to do something is a percentage of what it would cost us to do nothing.
Yeah, and I guess that was just in, in closing, I think that that's just what I would like to reiterate. I know you said that we're relying on the entire community, this is a community initiative. And I, I think that oftentimes when you have an entity like the school system, where it makes a lot of sense to do some of this, that I would just like to make sure that we take responsibility and rightfully do what we can do with the initiatives that have been laid out, but that it doesn't stop with us, and that we are part of a partnership with the entire community to make sure that all of these different areas are, are met. And I think, you know, we've just seen it with a lot of different things, you know, oftentimes because we are a large entity and we do have resources, and our community has been very supportive of the work that we're doing in giving us increases to our budget, that, that we not bear the responsibility that the entire community has to make sure that all these initiatives are met for, so that it's a community promise, not a school system promise or a one-sector promise. So I think you've heard strong support from the board in moving forward. We're right in the middle of beginning our budget discussion, so this was a very timely presentation.
Thank you for that.
And Todd and Betty, thank you for all your work and for being here tonight, and Dana, I know it's been a lot of work, but I know it's a passion of yours. So I think on behalf of the entire board, we thank you for being here.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you to you and your husband for adopting five children. Bless you, by the way, for doing that. Kinda crazy.
That prepared her for this. Great. Okay. Um, moving on, um, another important initiative and, and discussion that we're gonna have tonight, um, is the strategic discussion around our Title I program. So, with that said, Dr. Ritter?
Yes, at this time, uh, we will have, uh, Brian, why don't you come on up? I didn't know who was coming. Okay. And Brian, why don't you introduce who is here?
Okay, great.
Before we start. And by the way, this is gonna be our first strategic discussion, and it's kind of a, a follow-up to the OSR discussion that we had in December, if you might remember that we had title there as well. And so, um, if you could, then, uh, just kinda take it from here.
Okay. Feel free to, to not, you know, you don't have to stay for the entire meeting if you don't want to. I just wanna make sure people know that they can leave. Thank you. Sorry.
Hey, good evening. Um, we do have some people that graciously volunteered, uh, when we, when asked to come tonight and, and even cut their snow day short. Besides Missy, who did not have a choice? We have Missy Riley, uh, Director of Parents and Teachers, and we have Jennifer Richardson, who is our Title, Title I Literacy Coach Facilitator. Uh, we have Betsy Miller, who is a Reading Recovery Interventionist at McGregor Elementary, and Shelley Shaver, our Reading Recovery Teacher Leader. And then, oh, Julie Veach, I knew we had somebody. Julie Veach, our, uh, Title I Math Coach Facilitator, as well as the Math Intervention Facilitator. So thank you very much for being here. And I'd like to start off by, uh, Dr. Ritter asked us to come up with a few basic, uh, pieces of information about Title I. I know we just had the OSR, uh, discussion, uh, not too long ago. Um, so we'll do a little bit of review, but I also wanted to give you a good overview of the Title I program and then open up for questions after that. I guess I'll use the mouse. Okay. We'll start with the mission. Um, really, the mission of Title I is to accelerate students' learning, to get them in these programs and then get them up to grade level as quickly as possible. Along with that, it takes, uh, professional development for the teachers and a high-quality, uh, professional development to, in order to do that. Start off by talking about the Title I budget. Uh, for this year, we have a, an $8.3 million budget for Title I. That includes the carryover. Uh, our actual allocation for this year is around 6.9 million. Um, then we have the breakdown, or what we call the set-asides, uh, and we also have the percent of that $8.3 million budget next to it to give you an idea of, uh, how much we're spending in each of these areas. I'll let you take a look at that. Homeless is one of the areas that, um, you might not have heard a whole lot about as far as Title I, um, paying for some support on that. Um, we do pay for tutoring. We work with the, the shelters, uh, in the community, and we provide Sullivan as tutors, and they go into the shelters, uh, and provide that tutoring. We felt like that was probably the best way to implement that program, and we've had, uh, some really good success with that. We also have a teacher, uh, basically a Wonder Years teacher that serves, um, students over at, uh, Broadway Head Start, and she serves students that have been or are currently homeless. And so that's preschool program for homeless students. Uh, and then preschool, of course, the Wonder Years program and Wonder, uh, Younger Wonders, serving the three and four-year-olds. Uh, it's 1.9 million, which is a, a big chunk of, uh, the budget that does not go to the schools. Um, so that, that's a pretty big investment for Title I, but, uh, well worth it, as we've talked about the, uh, earlier with the Every Child Promise. Uh, neglected, this would be, uh, the Boys and Girls Town, um, and, uh, the Girl Shelter. We have 1.6% of our budget there. Highly qualified teachers, if we have any teachers in the district that, uh, maybe don't have the correct certification, then we work with HR to make sure that teachers get the classes they need. And then the set-aside for schools, which is the largest part, it's about 60% of that, 8.3 million, and that goes directly to the Title I schools. And 96% of that actually goes towards staffing, so, uh, that's about 4.8 million out of the 4.9. The other piece goes toward, uh, supplies and purchase services, supplies, materials, and then purchase services as well. Going forward, um, we do have, uh, some, uh, funds set aside for Focus and the Otis Schools, which are the other Title I buildings that were identified. We have four Focus Schools, and their budget collectively is, uh, 357,519 dollars. The vast majority of that goes towards the school administration managers, which, uh, we've talked about previously. Those are those positions that are in place to make sure that, uh, the principal is freed up to be instructor and instructional leader. Yes, this is good. Wow. No child left behind.
Okay.
The voice of D E C.
Okay, um, so they set up, uh, with that waiver, they have a new accountability system, and part of that accountability system is identifying, uh, ways to support schools in the state. They have, they set up an accountability system with priority schools being the, uh, the 5% of the schools that have, uh, the greatest need in the, in the state, uh, title schools. And then the next step above that was the next 10% were Focus Schools. And then, uh, on top of that, they have the reward schools. Um, but in between, uh, they have other Title I schools that also were identified for support. So it goes priority, Focus, and then Otis, and then the not-named schools, and then the reward schools. So that's the, the tiers of, of their, uh, support system or accountability system. I know, it's, it's a lot. Uh, so we basically, uh, for the Focus Schools, they're looking at the super-sub, the super-subgroup, um, was, uh, really what they're looking at and the difference between the super-subgroup and the rest of the kids. Now, one of the things in our, in title schools in general, and especially ours, as we looked at it, uh, in preparation for tonight, is the super-subgroup, you might think it sounds like a small piece, but it includes free and reduced lunch students. So it's actually, um, the, the bigger version of the entire school.
Can you define what's a super-sub, super, super-subgroup?
Sure. Uh, free and reduced lunch, uh, special ed, uh, Hispanic, um, black, and then ELL. So those, those are the categories for a super-subgroup. And if you-
So any student that falls into any of those categories?
They're now in one group, the super-subgroup.
Okay, and, okay.
I need a graph.
Yeah.
Um, and so, uh, that's also something, they looked at the annual measurable objectives, which is a little bit different for the Otis Schools, which include that super-subgroup. So, um, so that, that, those were identified a little bit later after the Focus Schools. Now, as part of the Focus Schools, we do have, uh, we had to create a plan. We had some funding from the state. It's a three-year, uh, plan that we created, uh, along with the principals. Part of that is also leadership, uh, training through D E C, and they provide across the state different cohorts for what they call MOLEAD. Uh, so it's a program that's been going, I think it's 15-month program, so we meet twice a month, two days every month, um, and it goes for 15 months. So we're, I think we'll end up, uh, with our last meeting in March or April of this year. And then, uh, they'll continue to run some different cohorts throughout the state. Um, on top of that, they also put money toward, uh, training or professional learning for their teachers at the site level. Um, they're using it to, to free up, uh, teachers to have data discussions, analyze data, um, and for some different training. Most of it goes toward professional learning for teachers. Um, but the vast majority of it is for the, the, uh, school administration managers. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a, another slide.
And how many, how many Otis Schools do we have identified?
Four.
Four. Uh, four Focus, four Otis, no reward?
Correct.
Uh, and none of, the rest of them were in the-
No priority, right.
No priority. And so that's eight identified schools out of?
Out of 20 title schools. Um, and we also, I, we looked at, uh, the proportions compared to the rest of the state. I could not get a response from D E C, um, about the Otis Schools to find out how many other, uh, Otis Schools there were in the state, but we did find out as far as, uh, priority. Have that. There are 58 priority schools in Missouri. Of course, we don't have any in, uh, Springfield. Focus Schools, there are 116. And, uh, there are 1,155 title schools in the states. 27% of Missouri, uh, Missouri's top 30 largest enrollment districts have four or more Focus Schools. There are 50% of those top 30 enrollment, uh, districts have at least one Focus School. So whenever we looked at the, the data, it really didn't seem like we had a disproportionate number compared to the state, especially the top, um, like St. Louis, uh, I believe they had, they had a very large amount, I think maybe 19. So, compared with our enrollment.
Well, and I looked at that because I wanted to, to, to focus on that. And, and my calculations, and I wasn't a math major, but my calculation showed that of the percentage of Title I schools we have in our district compared to the state, that we had twice as many Focus Schools as you would expect. Was, is that comparable to your numbers? That if you basically said, we've got this many, what's, we've got this percent of title schools, and I think it was 1.8% of all title schools, and 3.4% of our title schools are Focus. Um, and so it's basically roughly twice what you would, what you would figure. If we've got this many title schools, uh, the state has this many title schools, the state has 11, 55. We've got 20. Um, it, it, did that-
Again, and then, uh, did you look at priority schools as well, along with that? Which would be the, the 5%, because there could be also, those same districts might also have priority schools too. I, I, I can't say I looked at it in that way, but we did look at the numbers. It didn't, uh, whenever I looked through those numbers, we had four, and I was looking mostly at, uh, those top enrollments for the state. Of course, some had none. Um, but then we had some that, you know, like St. Louis that stuck out. Of course, they had, uh, vastly, you know, high number. Um, we looked at others, like Columbia, I believe had five. And again, and, you know, if I can get the information from D E C as far as the-
I, I, maybe, maybe my question, real quick question is, were we happy with having eight of our Title I Schools identified as either a Focus or Otis and none identified as a reward school? Or was that something that?
Uh, when we looked at reward schools, a lot of those, in, in fact, most of the reward schools are going to be a more rural district in the state. Uh, and again, I'd have to look at, uh, the breakdown again, but whenever I talked with Matt Goodman a long time ago about it, um, seemed like a lot of the reward schools, and I don't remember again what the criteria was for, for that. I believe, again, they looked at the super-subgroup compared to, uh, the rest of the students. Um, but again, we're also coming from the system where we had, I believe, 16 or 17 schools in school improvement before. Of course, then they've changed with the waiver, so they have different identi- identification system.
Same question. Were we satisfied with having eight schools identified as Focus or Otis, none reward? Were we completely unsurprised about that, or was that something that was surprising and shocking?
Well, like I said, as far as where we were coming from with all those schools and school improvement, um, I, you know, we've had so many that, that grew every year, and it was a totally new system. So was I surprised? We didn't know what to expect. And we didn't know the breakdown until we got it, uh, I think maybe a month or two after the fact. Would I rather have none in Focus and Priority? The answer to that is, of course, um, as far as, it's a surprise to me.
When we first talked about this, we were told, we didn't, didn't think we were gonna have any Focus Schools.
No, I, I came up and, and presented and said, I, I believe we're gonna have, uh, three or four.
Yes. The fact that, I'll tell you right now, I'll tell you right now, if you, yeah, we'll get some video tapes for it. I'll tell you right now, if you look at, you look at poverty levels across the state in title schools, okay? Uh, and that's where, you know, when you compare apples to apples, when you're looking at poverty level, I think you're gonna find that, uh, we really, really are probably well-aligned with. We need to do more research on that. But no, we weren't surprised by the fact. We were surprised that you were identified as Focus, because we didn't have any, any, figured out what it was. And I, I really thought we would have, yes, that was what we did. When we looked at it, if they would, rural, rural schools that were identified, that was what it was.
Well, I guess I would rather not get caught up on the, uh, the category of the title, but just, you know, that we have children who are in our Title I schools and are not formed, uh, in a standard, you know, year, you know, no matter what we call them or what we do, we need, that's what I'd like to hear is, you know, what are we gonna do? And what I wanna know is, we had three Title I Schools that performed there, and one type of school, I wanna know, what are they doing differently and can that be compared to other places? I'd rather just say, I've been hearing about, exactly what we're supposed to be, I think it's interesting information, but we have to move forward. We have success. What is that and how is that, that's my question.
They got a mask on, about the impact of reading, or kind of reading somebody up.
Well, every, I think every school, we have the, the general curriculum, exactly.
And everybody is supposed to be getting that. I, I don't know what other piece would be out there besides what everybody's supposed to be getting from the district based on our curriculum and then-
But not every school is exactly the same across the district with their implementation of what's going on in the district too. Uh, you have different staffing from one teacher to the next. You couldn't say they're all cookie cutter. Um, you know, there are a lot of variables that are in there, not just Title I.
But I think what I, what I hear the board asking is, has there been discussion and a drilling down into the data related to Title I services where it appears that in some settings, some sites, there is, there's data that shows those students are performing better than their peers in some other, uh, Title I schools. And yeah, there's all sorts of variables, and, and I think we understand that, but the, we've gotten so far down the road with being able to look at data and, and understand it, and I think that that's what I'm hearing the board say, is what are those, what are those, um, those differences that you've identified?
And I build it up, up on that a little bit, 'cause that's one of the concerns I've got is, and I'll pick one school only because that's my home school, Wilder, thank you. Uh, and they don't qualify as Title I, but they've got a significant need there. I think they're probably 38% free and reduced right now, or something like that or higher. Tremendous need there, and so they don't get services, but they've got kids that need intervention services. And, and that's not an issue with you because, you know, I mean, you're just Title I, but as Ms. Bush talked about, how do we take those strategies that work really well, bring them to scale?
Yeah.
For all of our kids that have those needs. Uh, I mean, 'cause you've, you've got an opportunity here to really showcase things that work at, through Title I, and how do we do that for those 38, 40% of those kids in a non-Title I school that don't qualify for those services? And, and to me, that's the data that is really, you know, how do we take yours and translate it and, and make it mobile to the next school?
And I think, you know, with the OSR, when I presented, we identified that early, early intervention was the highest effect size for Wonder Years. Reading Recovery gets harder and harder to intervene and, and accelerate students' learning as we go through, um, you know, just as far as the Every Child Promise is talked about as well. We have, if we can meet them prenatally with, uh, with services, then we're going to have a, a lot easier road as we, as we go forward. Um, and so really, for us, we have conversations each year, we have conversations throughout the year- And so really, for us, we have conversations each year, we have conversations throughout the year with principals about our Title I services and about what we're seeing. We provide professional development throughout the year for the coaches and the interventionists. And we work with building leadership as well. And we also have conversations about what other dollars might be going toward in your building as far as professional learning for teachers or materials and supplies. And I feel like with the effect size, we've really looked at how are those interventions working with kids? But again, it's that consistency from one building. What are they doing beyond those interventions? Because those interventionists are working with the most at-risk students in general. Of course, we also have high mobility, because we're sharing them across Title and non-Title schools. As we have a slide coming up about reading recovery, we'll see that a lot of students that are in services, they move before they finish their services. And I couldn't say that that's, you know, something wrong with reading recovery. It's something where, you know, the more we can track those students, that's going to help.
Which is the question, yes. How can, do you track them between, from billion to billion?
Our student information package is a great way to track them. And as I've talked about previously, we've increased the capacity to track students, especially for Title I. And I know in the district definitely we have. So if they are in a title service at one school and they move to another title school, then automatically that's updated in each school. Now, it might be that whenever they move to another school, those Title I teachers are already working with a student, and they can't just kick somebody out that they're currently working against. So they'll be on a waiting list a lot of times.
A system that's going across, coming from Title, is workshops. The reading workshop, the writing workshop, the math workshops. That started Title, the Title Program Guided Reading, that's all Title. When I visit non-Title schools, that's happening there. And it's getting better, but you see the difference between the Title and non-Title schools is the coaching. And that's where the workshops are fine-tuned, there's a lot of diversity that happens with those workshops. And so that's where we're seeing a rollout, okay? But the difference, of course, would be the coaching that's up in the literacy and the math coaching, so.
I guess the question too, just to frame this is, I know these are federal funds. Is there flexibility in how the district can allocate Title I funding? You know, like you gave your percentage to site support, wonder years, parental involvement, or is that very dictated?
Some of those are dictated by the guidelines. As far as parent involvement, we need to spend at least a percent. It says less than, because that's in comparison with the carryover added. Homeless, they give a couple of different options as far as how much we spend there. Preschool, we're not allowed to spend all of our dollars on preschool, but we can spend more. The problem with preschool has been finding space. And, you know, it's in high demand, and so we can only expand wonder years as much as we have space each year. Neglected, we get that amount from neglected sites. Highly qualified?
It's fine, you don't have to go through each.
Okay, but yeah, there is some.
It's just helpful for us to know, as we're starting to talk about budget, is just how much flexibility there is within that pot of money to allocate it towards resources that we feel would be adequate, so.
Really, the top ones, as you can see, would be preschool and then the staffing for the schools, which primarily we're trying to put that staffing toward early intervention at the school sites.
I'd like to also point out one other thing that's really a fact about the state, really addressing Andy's point, and that is this. Jeffries really would be a title school in another district, they're not a title school. We have a number of schools that would be title schools in other districts. So we probably have more, if you go across the state and do a comparison, we probably have far more than twenty that would be title schools. So you've got to keep that in mind as well. And so when we're doing comparisons, we've got to be careful that, because they are apples to oranges. So just keep that in mind.
Spread it out more. If we spread it out, we'd be taking from those higher free and reduced, and so then we'd be spreading all our services out, and I don't know that it would be as effective. So that's why we chose to put those resources toward the higher free and reduced lunch schools.
Part of my concern with, you know, looking at where other schools in the state is that we're starting to benchmark now against St. Louis City and Kansas City as opposed to who we traditionally benchmarked against. So when we look at Title, we start looking that way, and that concerns me. Question on the OSRs, and I just noticed this two hours before the board meeting. We had an OSR in January of thirteen that talked, the goal one was implementing the scientific research-based education programs, and then there was the results of that. And then the latest one was, had all the interventions pulled out, and we had the effect size on that. Is that a change in how the OSR is presented, or is that just something that was done for that presentation?
Ange, I'd have to look at it to know for sure.
This is the January two thousand thirteen OSR. And then the one that we were just presented.
Well, yeah, we went from, we went toward looking at effect size on that portion. Because that was dealing with the student achievement.
And we talked a little bit about this, you know, on the January two thousand thirteen. And the first one was, implement scientific research-based education programs effective in improving reading, writing, and mathematic education for Title I students assessed as not performing on grade level. So these are the ones that need the actual Title I intervention, right?
Correct.
So these are not students just in that Title I school.
Right, exactly.
And then we had the performances, and in that OSR, all of those performance series, all of those results were in the red range.
Correct.
Meaning that the intervention that we had used for those kids needing it was in what we classified as the red range, which...
I think that was for all students on that one. For performance series, I think they pulled out the percent of students meeting the expected gains for that.
Right. But it's, okay, I guess if you'd look at that, I'm not following there. Compare that to this. And then, as you're looking at that, and we talked a little bit about this before in terms of the interventions and the effect sizes, and we asked questions about the fact that the intervention, the effect size on the intervention was oftentimes lower than the Title I school generally. So the intervention would have a percentage, but the all Title I would be higher. So suggests to me that the intervention was not as robust as we would want it to be.
Well, if you think about the kids that are getting the intervention there, the lowest in the school, so they are starting much lower, at a lower starting point. And if you compare that to other students, then with the effect size, we're looking at the entire school, including those students. So you have higher performing students, I mean, it's the entire Title I school for the effect size is what we looked at. So we had that for the comparison. So one is for the students that we intervened with, only the other is for the Title School total.
Can you move on with your slides? And I'm sure that was for more discussion.
Sure.
This is great, I think this has been good.
Here's a picture of the Title I staffing for the last three years. So you can see whenever we were coming off the ERA funds, we had quite the dip as far as staffing. And this leads us to our current staffing here. We have twenty coaches. We had to reduce, because we had the funding cliff from ERA to non. We reduced the number of title buildings for two thousand twelve, thirteen. You can see that we have our reading specialists here. Shelley, what is the number for reading recovery this year? Twenty-four. Math specialists, and then we get into delinquent, which would be Lakeland in the juvenile system, and wonder years. Okay, then...
Can I ask, how does that compare to pre-stimulus? Because that number's so inflated. How does that compare to, like, say, two thousand nine?
Back down, and we might be further down than where we were when we started. I'd have to think back at where we were before ERA, which would be two thousand eight, nine.
To me, that'd be really important, because we've made a real commitment to put resources in the classroom. And if we're not putting resources here, you know, that may be something that we need to look at. So I, that's some data that I'd like to have, is, you know, we're, I know for a couple of years, that stimulus money really allowed us to do some good things, and then...
And it made it difficult to come off, because that's why we looked at, what do we do? Do we cut, do we go to fewer title schools and keep as much as possible the services in the top? So we had to make that difficult decision at that point. So I'm sure I can get that for you to let you know.
And that's before we had the levy pass too. So now, now that we have the levy pass and have that, yeah, we have the show resources, I'd like to see how that fits into that.
Well, I'd like to get into some of the rules and talk a little bit about what we have as far as coaches. We have literacy coaches, numeracy coaches. They do intense coaching cycles with individual teachers lasting approximately two weeks. And they also facilitate team meetings where they're meeting with teachers and looking at data and instructional implementation in the classroom. So we feel like the coaches help bring that system-wide fidelity as far as implementing instructional practices, looking at data. We have data walls at the building that they're looking at. And so I think one of the questions, Andy, you asked about is, do teachers know where kids are in their classroom? And they do quarterly go in and move the students on the walls to show the big picture. It's a great big picture to be able to see where the students are, you can look for trends that way. Interventionists, that'd be the largest amount of our budget as far as staffing. Of course, we have reading recovery, they're working with first graders, but they also work with any combination of K-5 as far as the building, what they're focusing on in small literacy groups the rest of the day. Then we have other reading interventionists that just work with small groups. Numeracy interventionists, working with small groups for math, numeracy. And then interventionist, like I said, they work with approximately forty students per year. Paraprofessionals are another staffing, staff that we have out in title buildings. They work with small groups of students, but they're under the direct supervision of the classroom teacher. And then wonder years and younger wonders. Again, we have the teachers that are working with twenty or less four-year-old students for wonder years. Younger wonders is three. And then we have the paraprofessionals that work there as well. We also have a teaching methods coach that works specifically with the wonder years teachers. And then we also added a counselor. We saw that as a need a few years ago.
And on that, if a wonder years classroom is offered at a school, do the children that are in that program have to show economic need? Or does anybody that live in that geographic area, are they able, whether they're middle class, upper middle class, if they live in that neighborhood and there's a classroom there, can they be admitted, or is there a...
The criteria be academic and socio-emotional as well. So I don't believe it really has anything to do with their economic status.
So, but wonder years, that money's coming to us to serve...
Titles.
To serve children who receive free and reduced lunch, right? I mean, isn't that what...
They've changed some guidelines over the last year or two.
Preschool is the only area where it's not based upon the area of the school. So it's not based upon the highest free and reduced lunch rate. It's based upon most academically at risk. And so that's our main criteria there. So many of the, let's take Cowden for example, many of the students who attend wonder years at Cowden may not live within the Cowden attendance area. That's just their closest school for them there.
Right, but do those families have to prove economic need? Or how are they admitted, how are they admitted then? Does it first come for served?
No, it's academically at risk. It's the, we screen around eleven hundred children each year.
Oh, okay, so the children are admitted that way, okay.
Absolutely, yeah, and we're the highest academically at risk.
Have a discussion...
Before you go, I mean, back to the coaching, and it's first of the year, so this is my first dumb question of the year, maybe your second. We provide a lot of coaching to Title I's, literacy coach, and in a lot of the, you know, you've got a ninety percent free and reduced in a Title School, and, which is somewhat of a uniform population. I'm not saying it's high problems, but it's a uniform. When you go to a non-Title School and you've got a classroom of thirty kids, and you've got a portion of those kids that are low performing and a portion of those kids are incredibly high performing. What kind of coaching, and this may not be a question to you, it may be for somebody else, but Ben may have to answer. What kind of coaching do we provide, those kind of, those, I'll call them the standard teachers, who are sitting with a classroom of thirty, but the diversity in that classroom is huge. It's not uniform like you have in a Title I school, or even in a low-poverty school. Because to me, it would seem, at least my experience, it was difficult for teachers to be able to handle top to bottom in the same classroom.
I think...
Without some significant coaching. And I just was curious, what kind of coaching do we provide them to help with that?
I think you're going to have a variety, I mean, you're going to have the spectrum no matter where. It's going to be more maybe profound, but maybe a smaller amount. But you go to a Title School and every teacher, that's the question, is how do I meet the needs of these students and these students? And coaching, whenever we talked about the workshop model, and that's something that the district has implemented across the board. The new curriculum goes toward the coaching, or the workshop model with readers and writers workshop, small group instruction, even one-on-one. And I think that's where we really get a lot of bang for the buck, and I talked about that at the OSR, is that core classroom, what are we doing in the core classroom, system-wide? How are they working with the title interventionist, the instructional leadership for what's going on in the building, the sped department, the ELL, all of those people? How are they working together to implement that curriculum? Because it's one thing to say, "Okay, we're going to do the workshop model." It's another, we have to have that professional development. So the coaches in Title Schools are working with those teachers to make sure that they do those cycles, where they're going in, they're modeling, and they're doing in front of the students for the teacher, then they reflect. Reflection is a huge part of the coaching model, that peer-to-peer reflection, talking about what can get better. So that's a major part. It's also our partnership with Arkansas, where we get that great training from Arkansas, and we have Jennifer Richardson bringing that back and working with those coaches monthly, sometimes twice monthly if they're a new coach. And so for a non-Title Building, they really don't have that dedicated person like Title. They do have a literacy leader, and they've really come a long way with that support. But if a teacher really needs support during the school day, it's difficult. So that's one of those limitations with not having a coach in a non-Title Building.
And that would never substitute the support that you get in those Title Sites, but the teacher engagement on those Curriculum Development Councils, as they select those materials with that oversight from that program too. For example, in social studies and science, there are levels for years. The teachers who are familiar with their students' reading level can put students in improvement. The materials are already crafted with similar subject matter, but at those appropriate website levels, which, again, we never can place, that's poor. But we're getting better at giving teachers the resources to make that differentiated instruction easier. And I would add to that, that rich history of the professional learning department, the Step Up Program, with that dedicated differentiation instruction. Could we always do better? Absolutely. But we probably have as rich of a history of differentiated instruction in this district as districts I'm aware of.
I think our biggest weakness is fidelity of treatment of curriculum and follow-up on, and making sure that it is treated as the research told us to do it. I think that's our biggest weakness.
And that's still, I mean, and that's still a challenge in Title Schools. Just because they have a coach does not mean that they don't have those same types of needs. They have new teachers coming in, they have veteran teachers that still may be resistant to changing, you know, from year to year. They have the same types of things, it just is, every school's a little bit different. We also have our neglected and delinquent programs, Boys and Girls Town, Girl Shelter. And then delinquent is actually a different Title funding. It's called Title One D. And that's for the Green County Juvenile Detention and also Lakeland. I forgot to list that one on there, sorry. And then getting back to, we've kind of sprinkled it about though, the ongoing systems review. We talked a little bit about that and the effect size, leading to the highest effect size being that early intervention. And again, we don't have the staffing in Title One for every student to get served. We have, you know, we have those limited resources and they're putting those toward where they feel with that collaboration with us would be the best use of that staff. But we do know that wonder years and reading recovery have a high bang for the buck. And so we always try to make sure that we're doing that early intervention. But again, we're not able to serve every single student that is below grade level. And we haven't fully been implemented in some schools for reading recovery as well from year to year, depending on funding.
Do we know what that gap is? Do we know what the gap is in terms of the children that could be served or, you know, need to be served and aren't? I mean, I think that's another, something from a board perspective that would be very important for us to see.
Because we do use multi-criteria, so each year. But again, it depends on if they, if they wanted to focus on maybe a third grade level or they feel like this is where we need to put those resources. Sometimes the, the site would decide to put it at a different grade level. And so they might not serve the first grade. It, you know, it depends on the year. And we, when we try to go back to data, whenever we're having those conversations throughout. But again, I think this data that we have this year really shows that it's important to put it toward early intervention.
And this is Shelley. I have one school in mind that I can share a little bit about that. One school this year is still under implemented in reading recovery. They have one reading recovery interventionist. They need two. As of right now, mid-year, there are thirty first graders that are not going to be able to get service. Four were served in the fall, but there are still thirty in need. So that might give you a little bit of a picture.
So we're not talking fifty, fifty percent. I mean, we're not talking fifty percent. We're talking, I can't do the math that quickly, but.
That would be equal to one classroom at that site.
Wow. How, how big is that school? I mean, is that?
There are three first grade classrooms. When we say that we are fully implemented, that is one reading recovery teacher to two, two classrooms.
Okay. And the kids that are not able to receive the reading recovery, what program is being utilized in those classes for literacy?
For the classrooms?
Uh huh.
They're supported by the literacy coach in that classroom.
Well, the teachers would support, be supported by the coach. So it's again, implementing that differentiated instruction using the core curriculum. And so if they're doing something like guide of reading, which they should be doing, then they're working with small groups as well as individual students. So they have the data to decide which, which groups they should be in. And then they work on their, on their instructional reading level, put those students, push them and help them grow.
So that's really the first differentiation of instruction for those students where you get into small group at the core classroom level. So if we don't have consistent implementation of that at a school, then we're missing a really important part. And they might be even going to reading recovery, but they go back into a classroom where they don't have that core classroom or differentiation going on that it's apples and oranges. And again, I think I mentioned that if we go in and we follow these students throughout the day, you don't want to see that. You want to see that they're going and their systematic implementation of differentiation.
Is the literacy group another intervention?
Yes.
And, and that's for, I'm guessing, kids that are maybe above reading recovery, but still needing?
Still very needy as well.
Okay.
Or a different grade level. I mean, they could still be this, reading the, the same amount below, but it could just be at a different grade.
Another point that I'd like to make about the one school that I was talking about in particular, because they're severely under implemented, that reading interventionist was directed not to serve kindergarten students.
Who directs? The principal or who?
Primarily based on their decision. However, we know then that that's going to promote a bigger group coming into first grade next year that had need. So of course, we're going to have conversations with the principal in the spring advocating for more.
The effect size, right? Looking at the effect size, K two.
Right.
But, but the effect size, we're not comparing point four to point nine four for effect size on reading recovery, correct?
Point four would be.
Well, but that's not what, but that's not what we're getting. All Title One, we're getting point seven five.
Right. So students that are participating in this intervention are what we're looking at for effect size?
Is the point nine four. Okay. But it's, you're comparing that, I mean, the graph seems to suggest that it's compared to point four, but the data that we see from your Title One OSR is that the Title One overall is point seven five.
Well, point four would be significant as far as the effect size.
Do we have data in non-Title One schools that show the reading or the literacy gains K two that would be able to kind of show?
I can pull that, I want to say point five, six in K two in the non-title. We have that last time, I just want to pull that comparison. I think the other thing that you have to think about is, is what's that systematic approach? To use kind of that medical analogy, we try these different items and we have to have some flexibility for if those interventions aren't working, what's the next best treatment? And I think narrowing the field or selections that are available allows us to maximize the resources.
Well, right. And I understand that. And, but, but getting a clear picture of, of what we're experiencing, you know, because to say, well, point four is, is what we're looking for, when our teachers are getting close to point six, well, really, we're not looking for point four. We're looking for something better than point six because we're already getting point six. You understand what I'm saying?
I do. And I, I think we've got to be very careful because an average year of growth is point four. What we know is that students are substantially behind. It doesn't matter what site they're at. If they only get a year of growth every year, they're still at the year behind. And typically it's more difficult to conduct events the more they fall behind. So one of the reasons that we try to shoot for a point eight or two years of growth is that's the only way that you can get people caught up. So there's a law of diminishing returns at some point. Burning people out, but you've got to have that urgency to get them caught up. Is that making sense?
It, it does. And, and the next question I have is, and I shared with you some research on the comparison of reading recovery with a whole class, it's not really an intervention, but a whole class way of teaching literacy, which is a lot cheaper per student than reading recovery, which is a quite expensive program. Have we looked into more whole class literacy models that, that, that are not, and what have we found in, in some of those things?
Well, we, we have Read 180 as far as our middle school intervention. And again, it's more difficult to compare something that's in middle school to our earlier intervention. But I do know that if you go on the What Works Warehouse, which is the scientifically-based research, independent research, reading recovery is really the high flyer for, for a reading program.
It is, but, but the cost per student is, is, is a lot of money.
I think it's a great investment as far as what, what happens for the students that, that participate. Is there another program that is maybe able to serve a lot more students at one time? There are lots of programs, but as far as effectiveness, I'm not, I haven't seen any that, that really compare to reading recovery.
And then do we have, and I know the answer to this, but do we track our reading recovery kids across years to see whether or not that effect is maintained?
That's something that, sorry. That's something that we are wanting to do. We have the capacity now in e-school with actually putting in when they were served, how long they were served. And now that it's an e-school, it's a lot easier process. However, we just started that last year. We do have paper and pencil. We have the database, but we also have to find maybe a comparison group if we're going to do a long-term study. We tried doing a long-term study a few years ago and the comparison group that we had, we had them one-to-one. So we found a student in reading recovery and then we found a student that was their likeness that was not receiving it. And as they went through, one or the other would drop off as far as moving or going outside the district. And toward the end, we had such a low number, but I think a lot of it was because of the tracking ability. And so now that we have this process, we can do that, but I don't know that we will be able to do it for a few years to be able to, to look at the, the progress. I think that also.
But you know each student that's in reading recovery.
Right. So we could go back and we can give you that, it's just the comparison. Because that, whenever you asked it originally, you wanted to know it compared to a student that would have gotten the services had they been at a title school. So we can definitely go back. And we have the numbers, that's on one of my next slides. Maybe we should just go there.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna try and rein this up. And we've been at this about an hour. And I think this is exactly what the board wanted. I mean, this has been a very good discussion. I think there's a couple of board members who really haven't had a chance to ask questions. And I don't know if it's.
I'll just jump in.
I think those of us, and I'm including myself here, who have had plenty of opportunity to have our questions answered, maybe need to sit back a little bit and let other people. But is there value from the board of getting through the slides? I think that there is some value.
This is the last slide.
Oh, okay. And then.
We've made it.
Whether it is or isn't.
Okay. So this gives a picture of reading recovery intervention. The number of students served over the last three years, the students that have discontinued, those recommended for other services, that could be that we're recommending them for special ed evaluation, could be that we're recommending them for more continued intervention in a small group or even another round of reading recovery. Students that had incomplete data were listed next. That might mean that they, maybe we serve them toward the end of the year or they, and they just have a full number of weeks of reading recovery in order to reach where they're going to. Students that move, this is pretty telling. We have, you know, a large number of students that move out of that group. And then none of the above, it could be that a parent said, I don't want my son or daughter in that anymore or some, some reason like that. So I think the tendency is to look at, okay, how many students went through and discontinued? I think the bigger thing is, I mean, that's a very important thing to look at. We want them to, to discontinue. That's the whole goal of the program because then they'll be at grade level. But we also want them to grow. And in the past, that's something that we showed on our program evaluation is the, the rate of growth. And we wanted to see their rate of growth at a higher incline than any of the other students in the school. And so they do have that, that high incline of growth. So whether they discontinue or not, we still want them to have come in and grown by the end. And we, and we see that those students are doing that. So something to look at then, it would be the, the students recommended for services. So that, like I said, that might be that we refer them then to sped or the student assistance team as well. Or it could be that we've recommended them just for further intervention with a, with a specialist.
Put down Dr. Frederick, Mr. Renner, just to make sure that you all get a chance.
Well, I appreciate your presentation and I hope everyone understands the emphasis on reading recovery because it's so critical for those first grade students that are not ready to read. But it is a dilemma because as you have explained, as we face shrinking Title One dollars, you know, some decisions have to be made. So as our, if we increase our wonder years program, then we decrease our allocation to our buildings. And when we decrease allocation to our buildings, then we're also mean, that means that principals have less money to put toward a reading recovery teacher leader or a math. We haven't talked about math there, interventionists, how critical that is. So, so that's the dilemma. Where do we go? So I think as a board member, what I would like to see is the evidence that if we, or as we increase, or if we are increasing our wonder years, we would want to see a drop in the need for reading recovery at first grade. And so are we seeing that? So, so do we have data that shows us that as we increase the number of, number of students that are enrolled in wonder years, we're seeing a drop in our need for reading recovery and then a drop in need, in our need for small group instruction, which then happens grades two through five. And I think the evidence will help us in making some of those decisions that, okay, twenty-five percent of our Title One funding is going toward wonder years and it's working and we have less need for site interventionists, then that's the way we want to go. If that's not happening, why not? And, you know, I really am concerned about the lack of specialists in the buildings to serve these most struggling first graders. And I've seen the, and I invite all other board members, if you've never seen a behind-the-glass reading recovery session, take, take time to, to see one. Because it's amazing in a very short time what you can do with children that come to school that have never held a book in their hand. They don't know which way to hold it. So, you know, we're starting with those struggling students and so there's a real need for that. And, and I realize we've spent a lot of time talking about it, but it's, it is a What Works program. But again, hopefully if we're doing what we need to in meeting the needs of our wonder year students, we see less need for reading recovery. But I don't know if that's happening. I haven't seen any evidence to show.
Well, I, I think, again, you know, we, it's from year to year, we have different implementation at the sites with, with wonder years and where they might feed into, which schools they might feed into. So if you have a wonder years at one site, doesn't necessarily, necessarily mean they're all going to that site. They could be from anywhere. And so we can go back. That's, that's a good question to, to look more into. So we can look and see as we increase the wonder years classrooms, are we seeing a decrease in the need? But we still have that different implementation each year and under-implementation at a lot of schools with reading recovery. So it's, it, it might be difficult, but I think we can look more into it and find out if there is a correlation between the two.
Well, you can tie it now to the student.
Right. Right.
Tracking, but it's just a, a means of monitoring. Now, I, I think I've heard that Dr. Ritter has inferred there is such a study, that we do have a study similar to that. I just know we've never seen it, the wonder years growth.
I've, I've done longevity studies each year fairly informally. I look at each year's third grade reading scores and just see where they are. And it ranges from about seventy-five percent to eighty-five percent of our kids are reading on grade level, third grade. And it's been, yes, each year. What I wanted to add though is the caution of your question, I think it's a good question, but since we don't really have reading recovery fully implemented, nor do we have wonder years fully implemented, it's hard to say that we're going to have a decrease of the number of children who are going to need that. Because like right now, we're only serving about ten percent of the children who are going to go to wonder, or to kindergarten next year in wonder years.
But of those served.
Of those served. And we, and once again, Brett Range, while he was here and working on, I think superintendent certification, he did an informal thing, study for me like that also, that showed that our children who attend wonder years are much less likely to need reading recovery than those who didn't get wonder years who are in same type of population.
And Ryan's just told us that it's going to be much easier to be able to monitor that.
Should be coming out. We still need to do a little work with tracking for wonder years as far as e-school, I think.
Yeah. And we don't have a good way to get children who weren't in wonder years tracked before they enter kindergarten. And that's what we're looking at too.
But I think right now, as a starting point, it'd be those that attended wonder years, of those that attended. And then when they move on, how many of those then require reading recovery? And we could even take that on then to, are these same students still reading on grade level at third grade? You know, are any of those students?
Without the comparison group. So you're saying without the, without the comparison group?
Start without a comparison group. Just, just as an overall look at where we're going.
Really, I mean, it's.
Start it early.
You know, those that have parents who are, of course, you know, there's lots of different things, but I think.
Mrs. Bush is about ready to jump out of her seat here, so.
Missy, it's more complex than that, as you know. Two studies have been done by the Mayor's Commission for Children about kindergarten readiness and the, what is it?
Aggression.
Aggression study. It's not just about that student and their cognitive learning. Two other studies, two years apart, have shown that their ability, their social emotional skills are just as important as their cognitive skills. And it affects not only that student, but the other students in that classroom and the stress of that teacher. So let's not simplify it too. So let's not simplify it too much, because we did surveys of the teachers within kindergarten classrooms, and the results of those kids coming from non-quality preschools, that showed the influence on the whole classroom. So let's keep that piece in mind, too, as we move forward.
The other piece, the other piece that I'd add, too, is that we are taking, like I told Ms. Callen earlier, the most academically at-risk students. A huge portion of the students, we go ahead and enroll them in Wonder Years, even if they might qualify for early childhood special education, because the process for early childhood special education takes quite a while in that child's life, and so we go ahead and enroll them there, too. So we are, our average starting point this year now at Wonder Years has been about the 20th percentile. So we're taking that first quartile and below, and so they're going to be more likely to need additional interventions, but hopefully not as much of an intervention as they would have needed without Wonder Years.
All right, and I think that's where, I think that would be good.
Right. Okay.
I really don't have any question, but just to point out, we have, this is the first year as a board, we've had Title I since I've been on the board. And before, it was just always Title I money, and it's this amount of money, and we never had any zero discussion about that. Now, as the funds, it was just Title I, and we're doing these, they're doing these things, and there was no discussion about anything. And so I think as the funds have decreased, all of a sudden, we have said, and others have said, how are we going to serve with less funds and more students, and how are we going to do that? I just think this is, I would agree with you, this is very important that we have this discussion, because we're going to get a budget. And if we don't integrate Title I with our regular curriculum, and we think this is just this add-on thing that never meets, then we're not going to make it. We absolutely might as well just fold up our tents, because we're not. So I think when we talk about what program really works, we've got to talk about how this is going to be integrated into our curriculum, because we've given examples of schools, and Jerry has, and there's all kinds out there that aren't getting the additional funds. But if we can't come up with some ways that this really is going to work based on this extra funding, then I'm not sure how we're going to get this done. So I just think it's, you know, it's real hard, when I made all my notes, to think, you know, exactly, maybe hard to track, but we're going to have to do it. Because if we don't come up with a way of serving all kids who are not in your Title I schools, but they have the same needs, and we can't do that within our regular curriculum based on what really, what works, then we're just, we're headed down the road where all of us know we don't want to go. I don't want to give names of districts, but we don't want to be there, because they can't seem to get out. They can't get out. So I think it's really important that we've had the discussion. I'm not sure if there are any answers. I, you know, there wasn't, because if you had a magic answer, you would have already, it would have happened, I think, already. I mean, nobody just...
I think it's collaboration, too. I mean, we've talked a lot about, you know, that collaboration, and I think more than ever, we are looking at that. And it's also that, it's that core instruction, differentiating, meeting the needs of all students, wherever they are, across the district, with whatever students we have. And then going forward and making sure that we're looking at that early intervention, and working from parents as teachers, up through Wonder Years, reading recovery, and that systematic, really, that systematic approach to teaching these students, I think will get us where we're wanting to go.
Okay, I want to thank you and your staff. It's been a lively, a very good discussion, I think, like Mr. Ritter said.
This time, I'd like to take questions.
You know this group, we...
Except for Amy.
We don't really stay within the parameters, but I think, would, I guess I would just say, if there were any follow-up questions for Mr. Hubbard, or through Dr. Ritter, that those can just get sent to you. But I think it was a comprehensive discussion. I think it shows the complexity of what we're dealing with, so thank you very much.
Brian, I like the way your beard's growing.
I tried.
For the last hour, right?
Getting grayer.
All right. Does anybody on the board need a break before we... Okay. We'll move into budget discussion to set priorities. Mr. Todes.
I'd like to... Here's Paul. Thank you for being here.
Kind of talking about the process.
This is a reminder to show you where we're at in the budget process this year. At the December 10 combined meeting, we had asked you to go through the SP5 indicators and rank those, and so we've got that information from each board member. The compiled rank was determined for each SP5 indicator. A cumulative score for the rank was determined. And then, because we asked you to put your number one as the highest and 12 as the lowest, we've looked at it in a reverse way, to look at 84 was the possible points possible. So seven of you, you could have ranked it at 12, that becomes 84. So for example, student engagement score was 25, so to look at the results from highest to lowest, 85 minus 25 gives the student engagement a score of 59. And then the rank was determined from what you have, and the comments added from each one of you. So on this graph, what you have, the box in the middle, is looking at the standard deviation, so the average was calculated as long as the standard deviation, and looked at the rank for each one to show significance. So the ones that are in the middle, that are in the box, are relatively the same, and then the outliers on both sides. So if you have any questions?
And have you gotten, so, I know board members just got this this morning, but just to sum things up, and I guess the danger in ranking these is, it sounds like one is more important than the other. And a lot of times, especially for me, it was the parameter within that student engagement, like stipends or whatever, that raised that. So I think I would just caution anybody looking at this, to not think that somebody that ranked professional development 10th doesn't think that that's important. But so, student engagement, academic rigor, and expectations, market competitiveness, professional development, and academic achievement would be those top five, right? Okay. And then you also...
Out of the top five, the three are from student preparation, that's the difference in the colors.
And then you also got information within each of those categories of the specific items, like stipends, or class size, or diversity of staff. And I guess what I'm wondering is if you feel, Dr. Ritter, Mr. Todes, others, do you feel like you've gotten the kind of direction that you need from the board?
This is much more direction than we've ever had before, if I could say it that way, and also, I think...
We are that kind of group.
Yep, well, to be honest with you, you've always given us pretty good direction. The thing is, is the statements that you made, that's not up there?
It's on the next row.
Yeah, they're all right here. And so, and so that's going to guide, as much as anything, as far as being able to show the indicators, you know, that, as far as what kind of direction, or what your priorities are. Now, we need to find out, of course, that's what your priorities are now. We need to find out what the classroom priorities are, the site priorities are, and that needs to come through the system as well. And then that comes to cabinet, and then we will share both of those at a given point. So this does help us, as far as, help us with our priorities. Other thoughts from other people on the cabinet?
Mrs. Bush, you just have to say. The only thing I would say, is one of the things I heard them say, is how difficult it was, and we would echo, and we feel your pain, that there's an awful lot of work that has to be done, and we need to lose teaching, and community support is important, is time-consuming, and it's important work, but it is comprehensive and difficult, there are no easy choices. So I think there's value in all of us wrestling with the same.
But to me, this is a one-year budget priority. How are we going to focus our funds this year amongst all the many strategic priorities we have? Am I right on that? I mean, we're not trying to, we're not trying to implement the whole six, seven, eight-page strategic plan. We're saying, this budget year, we're going to take funds, and we're going to focus, to me, we're going to focus on one or two things. If you want to go to three, because three is where early childhood is, I would go along with that. But to me, we're talking about this year, where we're focusing our money.
I guess, I guess my point is, is that combination of pieces that fit together like a puzzle. I mean, I wish it were so simple, we could just say, let's put it all here. But the reality is, in a district this size, it's that combination of things that's going to give us that bang for the buck.
Well, but if we're saying a broad thing, early childhood, and Title I expand, or student achievement, and all those non-Title I schools, let's say if those are two. Yes, there will be a variety of things that make those things happen. I'm not saying...
This gives us a sense, in other words, student engagement. And under student engagement, I can't read mine, I'm sorry.
Oh, there's diversity of teaching staff, class size, stipends, performance series, graduation rate, customized learning model implementation.
Okay, anyway. Anyway, that, you know, is a starting point from where the board's priorities are, as far as engagement is concerned, all right? And so we need to focus, coming from the classroom needs, we're going to look at student data as well. All this, OSR, all that data's coming to our table, and we're going to prioritize. And this is not simple. But I do agree with Andy, though, it does need to be very focused on priorities. And zero in on that, otherwise you don't accomplish all a lot.
I appreciate the attempt at trying to get input, our input of what we believe is important. I mean, I don't know if that shouldn't be turned around on its head, because we make the budget. You develop a budget, but this board makes the budget. And we need to understand that we need to tell administration what the budget should be, and not administration tell us what the budget should be. That's important, because this, there is not one thing on this that a majority of the board supports. Student engagement, the four comments, that's the number one thing. There's not one on here that, there's a majority of the board that supports this. There are individual board members, stipends, two or three of us mentioned stipends, two or three of us mentioned diversity of teaching staff. I don't, and you go through all of these. There's not one of these that their majority of the board is saying, administration, we want you to focus on this. We pick and choose. Early childhood education, a couple of us mentioned that.
That's why you put that.
I understand, but student engagement, I guess my problem with this process is, I don't understand, when you're back there crafting a budget, somebody's going to say, oh, let's remember student engagement. What does that mean? $50,000, and we're going to call it student engagement?
There's a lot of stuff missing right now. You can give us direction as far as general direction, but we got a lot of teachers, a lot of sites, a lot of information that's coming to the table yet, that needs to be analyzed.
And I guess, what I was hoping this board would give administration is a much more specific, for example, for me, it would be making sure we give teachers a raise, paying teachers, because in the years past, we've come back and we've heard from Mr. Todes, well, if you want to do that, then we're going to have to cut somewhere else. I don't want, as a board, I don't want to have to make that decision. I want to say, we're going to give teachers a raise, period. You're going to make it happen, and you're going to show us how that happens, as opposed to you coming to us and saying, here's our budget, approve it, and we say, what about teacher raises? Well, if you want to do that, then you're going to have to chump, knock out a bunch of this stuff that's really important. Because that puts teachers against other necessary programs. Early childhood education, we've done this with parents as teachers before, it's not in the budget. Well, can we put it in the budget? Well, yeah, you can, but then you're going to fight against this program, and this program, and this program. You know, as a board, I don't think we give you, I don't think we're taking enough ownership of this budget. I think this budget is presented to us by the administration, and I think you all do a great job. Believe me, I'm not, I'm not saying you're not. But we are not, this document does not provide any direction to administration. It is scattershot, it is, Bruce and I talked about, you know, our number ones, and it's for different reasons, you know? Mine, well, actually, it wasn't, I, market competitiveness. That wasn't market competitiveness, it was community support. Would you know that community support meant, for me, raising teacher salaries? Because somewhere in that, in those goals is, you know, competitive salaries. So I said, community support. What I meant was, I want to make sure we raise teacher salaries. No, I understand that, but if you just put community support, you just put student engagement, if you just put a kind of a scattershot note, I don't think this board gives the direction that we need to give administration. And that's, that's my problem with this, even though I appreciate the effort.
Well, I think this was a first stab. I think this is the most input individually, and as, and collectively, that we've ever had this early in the process. I think you can look at some patterns, you know, even if they fall in different areas, and that, I mean, that was the one tricky part of using those strategic initiatives, because a lot of these different things fell into different categories, and quite frankly, it was the one I came to first. If it had, you know, something that I was, class size, okay, that's what, you know, got the higher number. So I think that that's why that averaging, or, you know, the statistical analysis, even though it's probably a little bit more information than I need, it does show, it does show that, you know, we're collectively, we're seven people, we're trying to give, you know, collective direction from seven different perspectives. You know, this isn't a set in stone type of thing, you know, we'll still have a lot of input as we go forward, but it's pretty clear to me that there are patterns there, and there are themes that reappear. And I guess that would be my hope, that that's what is captured more so than maybe the indicator in the rank.
I think the thing that I would like to highlight is what Mr. Ritter said, and it's very true, is with the title program, in other words, the board knows a lot more than it ever has around title, except for Denise. Denise knows more than anybody. But anyway, but also, the OSRs has informed the board quite a bit. And so I think, with all that information, the responses you have here, I'm assuming a lot of that came from the, from, you know, you're getting more information. I don't think this would be the same if you didn't have that information, you know? And by the way, administratively, we don't feel bad about the low administrative support, we understand. You know, we feel bruised, but we understand. But either way, though, I think, to me, all the information you have from the OSRs, the information you have regarding the title, the strategic discussion, we're going to have continued strategic discussion. Eventually, you're going to have say on teacher salaries and all that. So administratively, we need to organize now what we have, and bring it to the table.
I saw, too, as, yes, class size, some of those things, professional development, some of those things we dealt with this last budget year. We've come some distance. So I was looking at it as, what has not been dealt with? What have we not taken care of? Where are the gaps? So I focused on those, because we've made progress in some of those areas, so that's...
I think what Mr. Ritter said about looking for ways to bring more coaching to the non-title, looking for ways to bring, yeah, I think there's a lot of strategy that we need to talk about.
And then how will we make...
And then how will we make sure that we're also looking at those requests that have come to us through OSRs as critical to this process? Because I think that's one of the things we talked about with the OSRs, that would be so important to us as a board, is that we're hearing from departments what your needs are. And so that's what we wanted to use, to assist us with this beginning budget phase. So maybe you could speak to where those are in this.
Well, you know, we have accumulated the requests like you have.
But, but, but requests that came to us as a board from those departments, like in their OSRs, where they show, where they provided evidence of need, and then what that need was.
Right. And, and as part of the budget process, we will accumulate those same requests, and include them in our process.
And our kind of behind-the-scenes process of that is keeping a running track, and who's asking and updating with that. So, it's not just pulling all of them, but it's a running record.
I think this is one of those proverbial, be careful what you ask for.
Because I think one of the things, kind of responding to Mr. Hosmer, which I think has got a really good point, this is going to create this board, which I'm not, it's a good thing, to look at the entire budget.
Yes.
Instead of looking at incremental budget, which is what we've looked at the seven years I've been on the board, we look at what's different than what it was last year. I think we, you asked us, we gave you information that we need to look at the entire $220 million budget, not what we think we're going to have different from last year.
Excellent.
And that's what we've been doing for years and years, is looking at what's different from last year, and not going back and looking at the entire process. Now, I know you can't eat the elephant all in one bite, and I understand that, but, you know, with this information, because the question's going to come back when we get the budget, why is administrative support so high? And that's not what going to be the answer, but what I'm saying is, I'm going to look at this, I'm going to look at the OSRs, and if they're not consistent, then, to me, that's a question, but it's not just, we're going to have $20 million of extra money this year, how do you want to spend that, board? I think we need to look at the entire $220 million, and prioritize it based on the entire budget, and that's a new process. We've never done that, or at least, seven years I've been on the board. And I think we should be doing that. But that's back to be careful what you ask for, because I think that's what's created this environment now, is we need to be looking at that entire budget.
Excellent.
So, enough said.
Okay, any other comments on this? I appreciate all the board members getting feedback in. I don't think any of us were too delinquent. And thank you to the administrative team for putting that all together. Moving on, I have one speaker, but it's on a non-agenda item, so that will be later in the meeting. So moving on to information items, school calendar. Step up. Don't be shy. And this is just information, right?
It's just an information item.
Okay. Kind of a timely topic, really, isn't it?
Yes.
Balance calendar approach to, that Robertson is trying a little bit this year. So before you, you have the, the information item, 14, 15, 15, 16, 16, 17 school years, you have all three of those school calendars. Up on the screen right now is specifically the proposed 14, 15 school calendar. We, we look at these in three-year cycles, and always propose one year at a time for you to approve, which will be in two weeks. The proposed 2014, 2015 school calendar includes 170 student contact days, which is 1,060 student hours, and utilizes a four-day student week strategically placed throughout the calendar in accordance to revised Missouri State Statute 163.021. And this allows us to have professional development days, on days that we don't have students in, in the building. It's important to note that DESI requires a minimum of 7,830 student contact minutes per credit awarded at the high school level. So this means that we can't have a quarter that is less than 42 days. So we, most of our quarters fall between 42 and 45 days. Our calendar committee this year, we had 21 organizations, groups represented, and so there's a list there on the left-hand side of all of those. Sorry that some of those are a little blocked out right there, but it does include parents and teacher organizations as well, and we appreciate their support. And getting that many groups, that were 36 people in these 21 groups, to come to an agreement on a calendar is always a big thing, and it went swimmingly, it went very well, and we, we found some, what we have proposed for you is, is what they have agreed upon. Here are some highlights, maybe some highlighting differences of the calendars that you see, that first, it needs to meet DESI requirements, and we're always grateful that it does that. First quarter has been adjusted, so that we don't have a break between first quarter and second quarter in the middle of the week. For the last two years, we have done that. Not been a, a highlight, and, and didn't go over very well, we were able to make a fix on that. As we have worked towards, for semester is scheduled, weather pending, to end before winter break. Each quarter will end with a professional learning or professional work day, and then it, we also support the professional learning calendar to make sure that our teachers get plenty of professional learning time within that calendar. And so there's a comparison of some highlights of specific days for 13, 14 to 14, 15. And at this time, if you have any hard questions, David will be happy to answer those.
Are there any questions about the calendar, Mr. Lee?
And this is more, not about the dates specifically, but more about basically the 7,083 seat time minutes that we've got, which translates to 42 days, based on the number of minutes our kids are in school on a given day. Changing the day, the length of the school day would change the 42-day requirement per quarter, if you had more seat time in a day.
Correct. Ultimately, the, the 39, 15 for a half unit or the 78, 30 for a full unit of credit is, is really a product of the amount of time that they sit in, in the classroom. So sure, if we were to add time to the day, however, we have limitations on the total amount of time that, that a given school day can, can be as well, so...
Now, why is that? Why is there a limitation on school?
Why?
There's a state...
There is a state statute, yes, that guys, that if it's less than 174-day calendar, then a school day can only be maximum seven hours, and if it's over, it'll be maximum eight hours.
Well, I, I know there's legislation being talked about, about extending the school day, and so that was kind of, kind of partly my question about, that would be a legislative requirement to change that? Okay. All right.
One of the questions I have, just because it's happened a couple of years, and there's been a question about building in snow day, makeup day into that first semester. Is there a way to do that?
For semester, we, there's been some discussion about it, but if you look at any average year, you know, the last time we had a snow day in the first semester was probably, I want to say, five, six years ago, roughly. So on average, it's, it's difficult to look at that as a, as a realistic model in the first semester. If anything, we would look at trying to maybe build two or three of those in the third quarter, and that's difficult to do because of our set spring break that we have. And so, we, we look at those options, but they never come easily.
Okay, well, I just, I, I'm not advocating for that, but I do know that, that had been a question on, let's say, maybe Facebook or something like that. Okay.
I know this calendar went up on Facebook today, there were two comments about this specific calendar, and the rest of the 47 comments, at least at that time, were...
Are we having school... Yeah. Well, I, I'm glad we have that forum for our patrons, so any other questions, Mr. Hosmer?
Well, I, I was going to ask the same question that, that Chris asked, and, and I understand, historically, we've not had to deal with that, but, but what would be the harm in building in one or two days that would then just be a, I mean, I mean, you could easily do it, you know, this upcoming year, and, and if you didn't use them, you didn't use them. What's the, what's the downside of that?
Well, there's, there's really two. One is, remember, we have a limited number of days, 85 days in that sense in the first semester. In order to build two snow days in the first semester, say two days in, you then have to move the start of that, these two days. So if next year, we're starting on Tuesday, which I believe is the... So if we build two days in, we have to start the previous Friday, in order to make that occur, to build into that first semester. That's a little bit of an issue there. The second piece is, the state requires we build in six. If we build them in part of the first semester and don't use them, the students will still not be in there those two days in session, and we've lost those two days to use at the end of the year on the makeups. We just build on top of it.
So you can't build in seven days?
We can build in as many as you wish, the state requires six.
Okay. Well, I was just thinking, for example, next year, Thursday, December 18, you could increase that to Friday, December 19, you pick up a day...
But then the teachers don't get that work day.
Okay. All right. The, the other thing is, do we survey teachers and principals? And I know we changed this so that, so that the professional learning is, is an all-day thing, as opposed to half-day, and, and I hear different comments about it. But do we do surveys on that to see how teachers feel about that, in terms of how that works for them, and, and principals, how that works for their building?
We do, and it's getting ready to begin on September 27, January 27 through February 17.
And can we expect to see that somewhere? Somebody can send that to us to show us the results of that?
I believe the, the high-level results are shared in the OSR, but we can get to the one right here.
It's, I mean, I, I'm assuming they like it, but, but it'd be interesting to hear that.
Okay, any other questions, comments? I mean, I don't know how I served on one of these committees once, but it was probably the hardest work I've done as a board member ever. I mean, it's very complicated, so I appreciate your work and the work of the people listed, and appreciate you getting all those diverse perspectives, so...
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay. Moving on, this was the item that was postponed from our meeting in December. So this is, actually, so, action items for separate considerations, so that we would be voting on this tonight, is that right?
No, we're going to vote on it.
Oh, it's just, okay.
And Mr. Renner, and Mr. Chodas, and I sat down, went through, and looked at this, but Mr. Chodas and his team really did a very good job of comparing MSBA with this. And so, anyway, that's pretty much where we're at with the policy.
I would propose, however, we have a new superintendent coming, and I would propose that we put up any major changes to policies, like financial policies, until a new superintendent is in place.
Are there, are there specific things in here that you think are specific to superintendents?
I think, well, this is, this is financial information. Superintendent is, is responsible for that. I think the new superintendent may want to have their way of how they handle the process of establishing a budget, purchasing all of these items. And, and yes, I have difficulty with two or three items in here personally, but I would rather have direction from the new superintendent, so his hands aren't tied when he comes and ha, oh, I'm sorry, they come. So right. The person comes to take that role. I would hate to tie their hands in looking at how they control, and the board controls the, the budget.
Mr. Renner, are you a board member that went through these? Do you have a response to that?
I don't think it ties, personally, I don't think it ties anybody's hands, because we're, we can make changes anytime we want to make changes. This is not, this doesn't mean that it's forever written and it can never be changed. It can be, if we adopt these, and somebody comes in, and even MSBA comes in and says, well, here's a new thing from the legislature, and this needs to be changed, we, we change that section and do that section. So I don't, I don't think it, it, it's simply, this, a lot of these are updates from 10 years, 12 years, 15 years, that have never been changed, and they're based on MSBA's recommendations, so that's, I think, pretty, you know, pretty high on what should be done, but I don't, I don't think that would tie anybody's hands if they felt like a process should be different, then they would, a superintendent would bring that to the board and say, I, I don't think this is the way we ought to do that. And so, I don't think it, I, I just think the sad part is that a lot of these haven't been looked at for that long, and so, to me, this simply puts us in a position that, that we're, we're at least updated as, as far as our physical management is concerned this January. Doesn't mean by next January, some of these wouldn't be changed again.
And I understand where Ms. Bush is coming from. I guess my concern would be, this board only has a few responsibilities, four or five in general. Policy setting is one of the fundamental things that we're responsible for, is setting policy for this district, which should transcend superintendents. Shouldn't make any difference to who the superintendent is. If we establish policy, whoever we hire, he, she, whatever, is responsible for, for, for following that policy. And so, you know, if there's a problem with the policy, we need to change the policy and get it right. But I don't think that the super, I mean, we establish a policy, the superintendent's intended to, to follow it. And so, you know, I'm not going to sit here and say that I've, everything is great and super about these individual policies, because I've only glanced at most of them, because I do have a question on some of them. But I think as, as far as postponing it, I, I don't know that it accomplishes anything, because I'm not expecting the superintendent to be writing the policies in the first place.
Well, then, let's have Mr. Chodas come up, and people can address certain concerns about different policies. This is, you know, this is our opportunity to look at this, and it can come back to us, you know, we can, you know, if there's discussion with an individual policy that we don't like, so, go ahead, Mrs. Bush.
Well, as I read it, I understand what Mr. Renner said, but it does not follow the MSBA format. There's some that are changed pretty dramatically from that. That's one of the issues I have, why were the changes made? There's also some that have comments, as they've been given to us, comments from someone, and then legal opinions under them, that conflict with what the policy content said, so I don't know if it wasn't edited.
Let's look at it specifically. I think that's going to be the easiest way to get through this.
My biggest problem is, we're going to spend a whole lot of time helping set priorities for the budget, and yet, we won't have any control, given how, get the, get the right one. DJF, no, no, I'm sorry, that's purchasing, sorry. And I have some questions about that, too.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
The difference between some of the policies say reference copy, and some of them don't, is that just, one was an MSBA policy, and if it doesn't say reference copy, it was a unique Springfield district? I was just curious, that's more of a curio, I just didn't know why some of them said reference copy, and some of them did not. And I wondered if that was just the origin of the policy, and where it came from?
Do you remember Dr. Ritter, or Mrs. Luden?
Or if that was just, will be taken off whenever it's done?
I think it's a little confusing this time, because a lot of times, when we bring the policies to you in the past, we didn't have obvious comments on it. But this is the way, as we go forward with MSBA, this is how they choose to handle it. And so, how they present them to us is kind of how we get them, and we only get them via them, we don't have any way to do anything with these, so we give them to you as they come from MSBA.
And just to give Mrs. Bush some background, we did subscribe to MSBA's policy management, so that's why a lot of this has been initiated.
Right, and, and all the changes, my understanding is, they've been vetted by MSBA legal department.
And you send them to them, and they take them and review them to make sure that...
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, and they send them back.
So you have one that you...
Well, my major concern, major, is file DB. And they've changed it from, and I don't know who that is, because I don't know where these originated, on the first, second, third paragraph. It was changed from total budget expenditures for each program, the maximum amount that, it's a maximum amount that may be expended for that classification of expenditures during the school year unless a budget transfer is recommended by the superintendent, is approved by the board. As it was changed, it went from expenditure for each program to expenditure for each function. Estimated by line item within the budget, each function may be adjusted to meet changing needs, as identified by administration, as long as the total budget for operating funds does not change. So it's telling me that administration has the ability to make any changes within the total operating funds without board approval, as long as it doesn't increase or decrease the expenditure budget for operating funds, which means to me, there's a big pot of money and the treasurer can simply spend anything as long as they don't spend all of the operating funds. That's how I read that. Now, if that's not right, I'd like to know.
Could you give me that number again?
It's DB, file DB.
It's on the second page, yeah.
It's on the second page, Andy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it is.
Just give me the...
And it's highlighted.
I'll see DB.
DB, highlighted in yellow.
CSPF?
Yeah.
Like the second one listed there?
To me, that's a major change, and it really prevents us from having any kind of responsibility for the budget. We can talk all we want to about our priorities, but ultimately it comes down to the treasurer's ability or interest in moving those funds.
Oh, poor Steve can't even see it, right?
And on the last paragraph on the, let me see. And I got, under DBB on the, on page one, they've changed revenue to fund balance of the school district, which means the treasurer can spend all unencumbered fund balance before the first day of July of the following year, as opposed to unencumbered revenue. And there's a difference there. Again, it provides a big pool of money without our oversight. That's my major concern. There are several others.
So you would propose having to go back to function?
The way that the MSBA recommendations were.
So the total budgeted expenditure for each program?
Program. And indeed, in the recommendations from DESI, it recommends that boards have control over everything down to the second test, to the second digit out of four digits for an account, down to the second digit. We don't have, given this, we have no control over any digits other than all the operating funds.
We did discuss some of this last year in the process. Can you talk a little bit about the language?
The language was replaced with the language that is in our current policy, DB, which is the approach that the district has used, well, since 1992. You know, as I mentioned, all the changes have been reviewed by MSBA, by their legal department. You know, if we were doing something inappropriate, I would hope that MSBA would point that out to us.
I guess my, I guess, Annie, what I'm hearing you say is that, why the need for this change, which is taking out...
By broader versus narrower. I guess that's the question.
Why taking out the language that the total expenditure for each program is the maximum that may be expended unless a transfer is recommended by the superintendent, approved by the board, and with the new language?
It's not new.
Is that what you're saying?
This is our current language.
This is our current language. In the yellow is what we've done in Springfield.
And I think...
So it's not a change. It's what we have been doing.
But I think the reason for us reviewing all of the policies is to look at making them better. I'm not sure it is the same as right now. I thought I looked and it wasn't. But aren't we trying to make it better? And if we are trying to conform, why have we failed to conform to something that makes us more accountable since we who are accountable?
And I, go ahead.
I mean, I would like the opportunity to prepare a response to any questions regarding...
Right. And that's why we have the ability. And what we can do is, at the board meeting, we can pull this off of consent and have, you know, have that response back. Now, we can vote on each of these separately. We can, okay.
So...
All right. So that would be the first concern.
Would it be possible for the, any board members who have questions to email me with the questions?
I think it would be helpful as the entire board, because I think individuals may have spent more time reviewing each of these. I think it'd be helpful to address any questions public, I mean, publicly, and you can respond then later. How does that sound? I mean, just so we, so we as a board know what the concerns are collectively.
One of the, one of the concerns I have, if we start talking about approving every budget transfer, is I have a problem, $10 million budget line item, we transfer $10,000. I have real, I'm, I think that's wasting our time as a board to do that. Now, if we're talking $3 million out of a 10 million?
We're talking program.
I know, it's program.
Yeah.
But, but I, I, we can chase pennies with dollars if we're not careful. I understand the theory that you're, that you're saying. I just want to be careful that if you start talking about budget transfers, that there's some guidance there that, it's like change orders. You know, we can't, we can't deal with $500 change orders. I mean, that's just crazy. And so I think budget transfers, there may be somewhere in between of, every budget transfer's got to be brought to the board prior to doing it, as opposed to, I think this is, I think this modifications that increases, we see those changes every month. We just see them in our, in the, in the report.
In the, in the arrears.
Treasurer's report, right. Versus having free rein to transfer anything in time you want to. I, to me, there may be somewhere in between to talk about that. But I don't still think we need to micromanage too much.
And I guess that's what I'm hearing. If you come back to us maybe with, there may be a middle, there may be some middle ground there, that it sounds like there, so that's what I'm hearing on that one. So.
I mean, is this something that we have an internal auditor? Would that be something from an auditing standpoint to address? I mean, I know we got a legal standpoint, because it's legal. I mean, MSBA, I'm fairly confident. But from an audit trail, controls, I mean, I'm just throwing that out. We got an auditor that reports to us.
Well, I wonder if, I wonder if pulling that out from the treasurer's report into a information item, budget transfers?
Well, it's a, it's a separate report within the treasurer's report.
Within the treasurer's.
Yes.
In, in arrears. Where appropriate, it has in arrears.
But you cannot approve in, I mean...
Right. I mean, you know, the board has the right, obviously, to question any transfer.
Okay. So there's, there's the concern on that one. What are the other ones that are of concern?
On DJF, purchasing policy, that's the one. There were lots of changes, but there was some comments that were left on page five of DJF, comments from editor and then comments from attorney left on there. And the changes didn't seem to address those comments. I didn't know why that was. Number one, why the comments were left on. But more importantly, why changes weren't made to reflect the attorney's comments in the...
They're at the very bottom.
At the bottom of five and beginning of, no, all of page five, most of page five, and onto page six, in dark five.
Explanation.
Yeah. Well, it's helpful to have.
Okay. If you can go back, apparently it's on several of them. So. Okay. Any others?
Those are the primary concerns.
Okay. From any other board members on those?
I have a quick question. You may be able to answer this one. DIAA, it's basic governmental fund balances. And, let's see. And this may not be, I don't see, it doesn't appear that there's, I don't know if it's a change, but it said, "actions leading to restricted committed and assigned fund balances." And it talks about Board of Education has the authority to set aside funds for a specific purpose.
DIAA.
Can you... DIAA, and it's under the page...
Actions leading to restricted committed and assigned fund balances.
And it talks about the Board of Education has the authority to set aside funds for a specific purpose. But as you go down into that next...
This may not be a change. This may be the way it's always been, but that next paragraph is upon adoption of a budget, where fund balances used, the chief financial officer shall record the amount, and then the board delegates the authority to assign amounts for a specific purpose to CFO. Is that same as it's always been? Is that a change? I know. I see, I don't see it cross that.
Right. This, this was a separate policy as a result of GASP 54, that, as you can see, we adopted it just in 2011, referring to changes in the government accounting standards board.
I guess as I'm looking through that one, I don't, I didn't see any highlights or strike things.
Right.
This is a brand-new one.
Right.
Any other specific questions? So it's mainly those two, and then checking any other ones to see if there are those extraneous, yeah.
Could I ask it, MSBA, who did review them? Who does the review?
MSBA. We have a policy editor. Her name is Kathy Bott.
So it's a policy, not a legal?
They have a legal.
Their attorney staff in their policy department.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. And moving on to 6.02, transportation facility funding.
In October, the board approved the acquisition of land and buildings to be used for the transportation facility. Initially, the funds to purchase and remodel the facility will be paid out of operating funds. What this does is it preserves our ability to be reimbursed from either a lease purchase or bond proceeds. Any reimbursement must occur within 18 months of the facility being placed in service. And so we ask that the board adopt the resolution preserving our ability to be reimbursed.
Where does this requirement come from? I, whose requirement is this for reimbursement motion? Is that a bonding issue, or is it a...
No.
Is it our own policy?
Well, we, state statutes give us the ability to be reimbursed, to reimburse our operating funds from either an LPC or bond proceeds. And so we have gone to our bond council, asked them to draft this resolution.
So it's coming from the bond?
Correct, from bond council.
Any other questions on that?
There are routine action items, and there is a question, I don't think I've ever had this since I've been on the board, but the special meeting on the 10th, when we are outlining the search process, it talks about, it outlines specific numbers of people that would come to interview with the board after the Skype interviews. And I'm just concerned about having specific numbers in there. I don't think we agreed to numbers. We just said we would. If there were people we wanted to invite, they would be invited to meet with the board, still in a semifinalist and, and private, you know, confidential setting. So can that be, is that an agreement with the board that we did not set a number there? It just says here, "Interview top two or three with board, February 17th and 18th." Yeah, just, yeah, semifinalist. Or just interview with... Yeah, semifinalists, because at that point, yeah. Is that okay with everybody? I just, I just don't want us to get in minutes a specific number.
Do we need to pull it separately to modify? I mean, I'm in agreement with it. I don't have any problem with it. I just didn't know mechanically, is that something that has to be done?
I think if we're all in agreement, we can, because we haven't approved the minutes. So they're still basically in draft form, right?
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Any, any other changes there?
We are to public comments for non-agenda items. I apologize to our speaker. It's been a long meeting. Just a reminder that you have three minutes to address the board and that it is inappropriate to address the board about any specific personnel issues. And the timer will be at the bottom of the screen. So I'll ask Cynthia Mohall to come forward, please.
Thank you for letting me come tonight. This has been entertaining. Okay, good evening. My name is Cynthia Mohall, and I'm here to speak about Common Core. I first became aware of Common Core about eight months ago when I heard bits and pieces about an education revolution. Okay, I thought, we've heard this before. What's the big idea? I heard teachers couldn't speak out because they were afraid they'd lose their jobs, that students would have data collected on them without parental consent, so counselors could pigeonhole them into careers determined by test scores and biometric data. I heard legislators, parents, and teachers were never told or consulted. I received emails from DESI's Michael Meeks that the standards and assessments had no validity or reliability, making them illegal to use under Missouri Constitution and violating IDEA laws for special ed. I heard that $350 million came from the stimulus and $200 million from Bill Gates to entice supporters like governors, state school boards, PTAs, the AEI, the AFT, the Education Trust, the NEA, the Fordham Institute, and others. This was an enticing change. This was buying it. It wasn't state-led. The NGA is a research and development firm, and the CCSSO is a membership consisting of Chris Nacastro. Governor Nixon signed us on before the standards were written, and I want to know how this is legal. Bill Gates is a radical progressive. He said, "When the tests are aligned to the common standards, the curriculum will line up as well, and it will unleash a powerful new market of people, providing services for better teachers." This isn't about kids, folks. This is about money. Surely by attending the DESI meeting in May, I would see the misunderstanding, but instead I saw angry parents and taxpayers who came with honest and serious questions, being told to write them down, that DESI wasn't qualified to answer them at this time, at this meeting. Now I'm not concerned anymore. I'm pretty mad. The DESI talking points were as untruthful as Nacastro when she testified to our legislators. So do I trust people being paid to lie to me, or do I trust parents, teachers, and experts? Teachers are calling Common Core child abuse, and doctors are diagnosing kids with Common Core syndrome because of the stress related to the test. And personal data is no longer protected under the... stress related to the tests. And personal data is no longer protected under the FERPA-HIPP laws. They'll now correct, collect 400 points instead of 45. And no, it doesn't go through the government, the education system. It goes through what we signed on in Sback. So, why are people being so upset about this? Because they're finding out. The MAP, the SBS, excuse me, the Sback yearly test is being called the MAP, so parents don't find out about it. And the Missouri School Improvement Plan is the new name for Common Core. It seems to me that somebody succeeded in turning education into a goldmine. Every piece of Common Core is copyrighted and cannot be changed. It's a $1.5 trillion extravaganza, and corporations are smelling the blood in the water. So, with this, I would like to ask you to please look at this a lot harder, a lot deeper, and put aside the money, put aside everything you've heard.
Ma'am, your time's up.
And thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to comments from the board, legislative update.
Circus starts tomorrow.
Hold on. Anything else?
There's lots of issues out there, but they're all-
I really, I really was pleased with our reception, if I may say it. I thought, I thought the turnout was really awesome. And so, I think we need to lock in that date in the future. But also, I think they also, it's nice to have that face-to-face conversation, so when we visit with them. Okay. Legislatively, by the way, the salute, I know all of you. I just remind you that we have the salute, and we are going to be the center, or the main people in that, in the salute. And Teresa Bloodsoe is organizing that, a lot of technology, a lot of other things that are going to be helping demonstrate what we, we are doing. But that's going to be an excellent opportunity for us to be having conversations with legislators as well. So, we may want to-
Highlighted area rotate? Does that, does that rotate? Because it would be helpful, I know I made some plans, business-wise, to be out of town and not able to attend. And had I known we were going to be the highlighted group, I would have been able to make some changes. So, just having that on people's radar screens in the future, that would be helpful. And I may have been notified and missed it. So.
Same here.
Anything else? Okay. Any future issues?
Ruby Payne. Any of you want to go? If you do, let me know. Send me an email, and I will transfer, or forward your email to the parties that have reservations.
What day is that?
That's going to be February 11th and 12th, which is, I believe, a Tuesday and a Wednesday. Is that a bad day again for you guys? But anyways.
I think we have some superintendents, but we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out.
I'll, in fact, I'll forward it to you. Send me if you're interested, and then I'll send it to you. All right.
Anything under future? I thought we covered a lot of ground tonight. Thank you, everybody, for sticking with us. I thought it was really, I think, what some people have said study sessions should be about. And I hope it was helpful to the administrative team as well. So, anything under other?
Don't lose the January 21st date that every child initiative talked about. And so, you may-
Where's that going to be?
I don't think they announced that yet. I don't-
Or time.
Or time, yeah. I don't think there's-
Just a date so far.
Just a date, yes.
And the fact that, I guess it was on Facebook, on our, or on our page, with SBS on how we're making up all these days, was there with, for everybody to see, because that's always a question that people, I thought it was excellent. And if they couldn't, I know, I just, it was, but it, that's a lot of always questions.
Oh, I get that every day.
And so, I, I thought that was excellent and well-done. So, it, it's out there. People, I'll just refer them to that page, so I don't have to explain that.
Just a reminder to do your plus deltas, as a way of helping us improve our work together. And as a reward for a very hearty and healthy meeting, we don't have to vote to go into executive session. So, meeting adjourned.
Oh, God, I hope so. I hope you're right. I asked today, and-